Yep, we are going to get started. This is the eighth and final meeting of the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission for this four-year term. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Commission. I'm joined by Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District and Comptroller-Elect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Director of Finance, Henry Raymond. Inspector General, Isabel Cumming.
Thank you.
Listening from tonight, excused our Council President Brandon Scott, his grandmother passed away, and I believe he has services this evening. And Comptroller Joan Pratt is also unable to join us. And the fifth and final member of the Commission is Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District. We also have Marguerite Curring with us, who is staff to the Committee. Marguerite, second thought, if there's anyone from the Mayor's Office of Department of Relations, Nick, Matt, or Nina, or anyone from the Council President's office, Dominic or Kalen, if you could please elevate them. All right, we've been joined by Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, as well as Rebecca Simmons, who is Council for the City Council, which is always a tongue-twister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Matt Stegman and Nina Themmlis from Mayor Jack Young's office, and Dominic McIlly from Council President Scott's office. We are going to get started. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Colleagues, is there any discussion of those minutes? If not, if they're to approve the minutes.
Move for approval.
Motion by Cumming, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Henry. We will take a voice vote on this. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Marguerite, if you could please note that motion carries five to zero with Scott absent. Next order of business is the status of the 2020 Group B audits. Josh, I don't know that I introduce you, our City Auditor, Josh Pash, who's been doing a phenomenal job. Josh, if you could give us an overview of where we're at with the eight performance and eight financial audits for the Group B agencies.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Pash, I am the City Auditor, and I am going to see if I can share my screen.
Just one second, let me change it. Okay.
Okay, good evening, and I am here to present the overview of the current calendar year We had in our Group B audits, our issued dates or estimated issued dates for the ones that are not complete are on the screen. So for the Baltimore Police Department, they have been issued. For Baltimore City Health Department, both financial and performance are expected to be completed in December. The December 31st audit will be presented at the first or second quarter of estimates. Department of Human Resources, the performance audits has been issued, and we are scheduled to complete the financial audit by the end of the year. And then for Department of Law, both completed by the end of the year. For Department of Planning, we have completed those, and Rec and Parks, we have completed those, one was issued this morning. For Department of Transportation, the financial is coming up. And then for the Mayor of Office of Employment and Development, they are both scheduled to be completed in December. For our Biennial financial audits that we completed, we have following findings, a summary of the following findings. For the category of revenue, I broke these out into categories like I did last time, I think they will be more effectively presented by category versus by agency.
Hey, Josh.
Yes?
Josh, are you all here and Josh cut out a little bit, or is that just me?
Yes, Mr. Chair, he's cutting out.
Okay. Not sure if it's a, maybe it's a mic setting, Josh.
Let me go ahead and switch my data stream.
You can turn, if you want to turn off your video, that might help.
Okay.
We all know what you look like. Real quick, Josh, just as you go through this, just want to remind you, any of these audits that are not completed, please try to be as broad as possible in terms of your summary of findings. Certainly wouldn't want you to disclose something that hasn't gone through the quality control and quality assurance process.
Okay. Second. Okay, can you still see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay. So for Department of Rec and Parks, we have two findings under revenue. The city and the agency need to monitor revenues to ensure that all receivables are collected and recorded in the appropriate agency's accounts. During our audit, we noted that revenue billings for reimbursements of funds on capital projects are billed by the agency, and they are approved by BAPS, Capital Projects Accounting Group. The, when the bill is sent, revenue is recognized and receivable is set up on the agency side in the agency system, and BRC receives the money and allocates that out to the proper revenue and receivable. However, the receipt system, which is City Dynamics, and the billing system, which is the system used by the agency, are not integrated, and many times, we find that BRC is having to try to identify cash receipts that they receive to the proper account. So this has caused discrepancies of posting revenue to the wrong account, and also not posting revenue at all, because the BRC hasn't been able to identify where they're supposed to be posted, which misstates the revenues for the agency. We also noted inconsistent recording information in the system used for revenue collection, and this recording may have caused challenges in revenue recognition. So along the same lines, we noted that state and federal agencies will often wire large sums of money to the city, and that is collected by BAPS, and then BAPS has responsibility to break down the payment, oftentimes having to use an online system, which is only available for a limited time, and they maintain the supporting documentation with manual.
Hey, Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Marguerite, I just got a note from the Comptroller's Office that Comptroller Pratt is joining us by phone. If you could please elevate her to panelist.
That's not possible if she's joining us by phone. I'm not sure, I'll try.
Okay, thank you.
I'm unable to do it, sir.
Unable?
Yes.
I'll take care of it, thank you. Josh, please continue.
Okay. So we noted that the city financial statements are not integrated, and that has caused discrepancies between the general ledger accounts and the agency's standalone cash collection system. Under expenditures for Baltimore Police Department, we noted certain encumbrances on the books at fiscal year end were not for future expenditures. When looking at the encumbrances, we noted that encumbrances were being recorded at the blanket PO maximum amount, and if that full amount was not utilized, the amount still remained as an encumbrance, which was overstating the encumbrances and could cause misleading information in the financial statements on the budgetary basis. For planning, we noted that controls over the review and approval of grant expenditures need to be strengthened. We noted that when we were auditing and testing an $800,000 grant, that $18,000 in expenditures associated with Baltimore Community Foundation could not be supported. When we investigated, we found that the cause of this was the individual home manager program moved to the Department of Housing and Community Development and continued to oversee the activity from there. The responsibility was not reassigned to that, to that agency, and the agency relied upon Department of Housing and Community Development to maintain custody of the grant documentation, and that was not done. We also noted that inventory controls over parking coupons issued to members of various commissions and review panels were lacking. We noted that the agency purchases daily parking coupons for commission and panel members who attend scheduled meetings. We looked into this because most of the meetings were done remotely over in the last year, and we noted that there is no inventory controls to track what happens to the purchased parking coupons, and who they're dispersed to, and what happens to any ones that are left over. For payroll, Police Department, Planning, and Department of Rec and Parks. We, common finding across all agencies under payroll is retention of documentation to demonstrate compliance with city payroll policies, which includes support for overtime, support for comp time, and support for approved leave is lacking, and we found that with these three agencies also. We also noted with Department of Rec and Parks that they had agency alarm callbacks, which is when an alarm goes off at one of their facilities and an employee needs to go and investigate the alarm and then turn it off. The union agreement and human resource policy is that they get a minimum of four hours for a callback. When we looked into it, we noted that there was no supporting documentation to document that the alarm went off, and whose responsibility was to go, and that the policies were being followed. We also noted that the city needs to improve system controls and timekeeping in the payroll systems. We noted that the human resource information system and the e-time system are not always consistent in the data that they contain. We noted that backup support is not, cannot be maintained in the HRIS system, and that when off-cycle checks were issued, that supporting documentation is in a manual, manually filed, and it was, we were not able to obtain all of the samples that we selected. We also noted that off-cycle payments are not always recorded in e-time, and we found instances where hours were recorded in the HRIS system and the check was issued, but they weren't correspondingly reported in e-time, which made it difficult to validate those hours and that time worked. We also noted that historical edits that are posted in e-time, that it is challenging to connect when the historical edit, the hours added or modified, were worked, and when they were paid, which is in different time periods. So for instance, if a person did not have their time fully reported to pay periods ago, a historical edit will go and adjust that. However, the payment will be made in the current pay period, and connecting those dots was difficult, and we weren't able to validate all of our test samples. We also noted that in e-time, for certain individuals, generally temporary individuals, that their hours recorded all in one day. So we noted for one employee that they had 71 hours for the pay period recorded on one day, and for that pay period, it was a total of 83 hours. When we tried to identify if the excess over 80 hours was compensated as overtime, we're not able to determine that, and the system did not require that. For Baltimore Police Department regarding, related to payroll, we noted secondary overtime billing is not monitored, and the secondary overtime activities are not properly recorded. This is for events that the city staffs with the police department, and the time that the police officers are working those events, which are to be reimbursed by the event planner or a third party, that those billings are not monitored to make sure they're paid, and also the payroll expense that is recorded, is recorded as receivable with the expectation that the event planner or a third party will pay it. However, in the event that the third party does not pay it, or does not pay the whole time, the whole amount, that expenditure is, continues to be recorded as an asset and not an expense, understating the city's expenses. That concludes the financial audits. Is there any questions related to the financial audits before I move on to the performance audits?
Let's do a performance, and then we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
Okay. For performance audits, for Department of Human Resources, these were the measures. We noted that for fiscal year 2019, they did not meet the targets for any of their measures. As a result, we did not validate that the measures were correctly reported, since they didn't meet the measures. And we did inquire, based on our last meeting with the Biennial Audit Commission, why the targets were not met, and DHR had expressed to us that they had a staffing shortage, as well as the number of classification and compensation projects requests had increased significantly during the period. And then for the average number of working days to fill civil service vacancies, they had identified incorrect information was received from the agency or department requesting the vacancy, and when they did follow-ups to those agencies, the responses were not timely enough for them to actually make their metric of number of days to fill the vacancies. And then regarding number of training participants, there was a transition in DHR where they moved to a new office, and they had a change in management, and then there was also, training funds were not enough to make their goals, and then the 2018 ransomware attack also impacted their metric. For 2018, Department of Human Resources met two of the three performance metrics. We did not validate the number of training participants, because during 2018, they were using a manual process, and they had updated that process in 2019 and 2020, which was much more effective way of reviewing it. We did evaluate those updated policies and procedures, and we had no findings related to those. For the average number of working days to fill civil service vacancies, we noted that the department had implemented a new standard operating procedure, and that control was not fully effective during the period. However, we did not find any discrepancies for 2018. For planning, the performance audit, according to the budget book, all three selected performance measures, method targets for both fiscal 19 and fiscal 18. However, when we went to validate the performance measures for Service 763 and 765, the actual results were not reported correctly. For, sorry about that. For Service 763, the comprehensive planning and resource management for average number of days for basic permit review, the incorrect calculation methodology and data reliability controls impacted the performance measure. What we noted here is that any permit that was started and completed in different fiscal years, they were not included in the calculation. And in addition to not being included in the calculation, they were often calculated as a negative one day to complete. So that skewed the results and led to inaccurate reporting. For Service 765, percent of climate action plan recommendations completed, what we noted here is that when we looked at the measure, the expectation was that the targets and goals were going to be on an annual basis, as most performance measures in the budget book are. However, they're reporting project-to-date basis, and as such, the reported budget book was misleading. We also noted that the recommendations noted as completed excluded measurable and verifiable pre-established targets, so that we couldn't validate the actual completion. And we also noted that documentation was not available to determine whether the overall strategic goals associated with the greenhouse gas reduction were achieved or impacted by the recommendations. For Department of Rec and Parks, we noted that in fiscal year 2019, they met two of the three selected performance measures according to the budget books, and in 2018, they met one of the three. However, when we validated the findings, we, when we validated the findings, we noted that the DRP did not meet the targets for any of the selected performance measures for either fiscal year 19 or 18. Regarding the DRP performance audit, we have the following findings. For Service 645, the Aquatics Division, percentage of pools meeting maintenance standards. So we noted that the requirement was that each pool must have a operating permit issued by the Department of Health, and that they were not, the permits were not issued. When I followed up with Department of Health, they had actually passed the inspection. However, since they didn't pay the permit fee, the Baltimore City Department of Health didn't issue them a permit, which, as we determined, was a validation, was a, was not following state COMAR rules. For 645 Aquatics Division, percentage of pools meeting standards, we noted here that the methodology, as we were told when we learned the process, was not the methodology used to calculate it. The methodology used, that they were supposed to use, was of all the pools that were available to be opened, in other words, they weren't closed for construction or renovation or anything like that, were, was the denominator, and then all the pools that were open would be the numerator. However, they only used, as a denominator, pools that were, past inspection were opened, thus, they always reported 100%, and the actuals were not 100%. For Service 646, park maintenance, number of playgrounds with 100% functional components, we noted the underlying methodology for establishing a target, and also the actual results, was not reasonable. What they did is, how they determined the percentage of functional components that were 100% complete, was if there was no open service ticket, then they were 100%. So the only one, only parks that were identified as not 100% functional were ones with open service tickets that needed repair. And when we met with the agency, they agreed to modify and do inspections outside of the normal repair process or identified repair process, to identify if the playgrounds are functional, even if they haven't had a service request placed on them. For 645, urban forestry, number of tree maintenance service requests, the monitoring control for the service and operation efficiency needs to be improved. We noted here is that DRP has a flowchart for processing the service requests for tree maintenance, and, but they don't have formal written policies and procedures to determine whether the service requests and the work orders are closed within established timeframes or service level agreement, and to accurately report the actual results within the budget book. In addition, they don't monitor the service requests and work orders, and we noted that in fiscal year 2019 and 18, they had a significant number of open work orders. For example, in 2019, there was, for both years, there was hundreds of open work orders. And then we also noted that they did not establish service level agreements or expected timeframes to complete the work orders for all types of work orders. For Service 654, urban forestry performance measure, for the number of tree maintenance service requests received, we noted that this measure is not within the control of the agency, and does not provide an effective measure on the performance of the agency. Department of Transportation, according to the budget book, in 2019, the transportation did not meet any of the performance measures, and we did not validate those measures that were not met. And in 2018, according to the budget book, they met one measure. However, we did not validate those actual results, because they were not able to provide adequate supporting documentation for us to do so. We noted the following findings for the DOT. For Service 683, street management, percentage of potholes repaired within 48 hours, we noted a lack of policies and procedures, which led to inaccurate documentation. We noted that, since there are no procedure guidelines, that the clerical staff that enter in the completion dates are not entering them in consistently, and we also noted that there is no secondary review to validate those results. For Service 683, the name of the performance measure in the budget book does not reflect the actual performance measure results tracked by DOT. The performance measure stated indicates that it is the percentage of potholes repaired within 48 hours. However, the DOT is reporting the percentage of pothole service requests repaired within 48 hours, and a service request may include more than one pothole, and generally found that this was understating the metric. For Service 683, cost per lane mile resurfaced by internal controls, we noted a review process was necessary to accurately report the cost per lane mile. We noted that in their calculation, not all payroll burden and overhead costs were included, which led to an understatement of the cost. And then we noted that the milling and paving cost data does not agree to the actual results in the budget book, and that's because the, they are capturing it on a calendar year basis, but the budget book is reporting on a fiscal year basis, and so the supporting documentation was not consistent to support it. For 693, parking enforcement, we noted that counting the number of citations issued was not a measure of the DOT's effectiveness or efficiency, it was basically an external metric, and we recommended, as we recommend, that performance measures are reviewed on a regular basis. For prior year findings, for Department of Human Resources, we noted one prior finding was implemented, and one was partially implemented. The one that was partially, partially implemented was a finding that the actual results were not supported, and they couldn't, they couldn't provide support. We noted it's partially implemented because the DHR did develop and implement a standard operating procedure. However, when we checked the 2019 actual amount reported in the budget book, it did not agree with supporting documentation. So we gave partially implemented. For the Planning Department, there were two prior year findings implemented, eight partially, and five not implemented. We noted that all of the partially and not implemented findings were, fell into three categories. One was that they didn't have documented procedures around the performance measure. A second one was they did not maintain supporting documentation, and a third was that they did not meet the performance measure targets. For the ones that were identified as partially implemented, we noted that the Planning Department had policies and procedures, however, they did not have supporting documentation, or it was not available for us to validate. For DRP, we noted two prior findings implemented, and five were partially implemented. The partially implemented fell into the same categories as planning, which was they didn't have documented procedures for the performance measure, or they didn't maintain supporting documentation, or they didn't meet the performance measure targets. In addition, we noted that there was inconsistent reporting in the budget book from year to year. We also noted that the stockroom inventory policies and procedures were not updated and ineffective. And that was basically, we reported And that was basically, we reported that the inventory was not reconciled to the regular or annual inventory counts to update it, and that there was no policies and procedures to identify what should be counted and when it should be counted, or that it should be counted by an independent person. For DOT, we noted four partially implemented prior findings and seven not implemented. Those fell into two categories, the Department of Transportation did not meet the performance measure targets, and the DOT did not maintain supporting documentation. Overall recommendations that the Department of Audits brings is under financial to maintain documentation for payroll activities. This is a citywide issue, which has also been presented in the CAFR and the single audit. Updated citywide policy, payroll policy and procedures. We noted in the AM that the payroll policies issue dates span decades and that they are not consistent with current payroll tool and current payroll processes. We also recommend under the financial side that the entire encumbrance process be reevaluated and formalized. This goes back to how encumbrances are carried forward, whether they are really going to be for future expenditures or not, and there are a number of other findings that we had identified with encumbrances in previous audits. And then the, the last major overall recommendation is to track receivables to match cash receipts to correct revenues. We believe that if the city improved the tracking of receivables and recorded receivables, that the collection of revenues would increase. Under the performance, we recommend that the city and each agency reevaluate the performance measures to align with the city's or the agency's specific vision, mission, goals, and objectives. We noted that there are a lot of performance measures that are carried forward over years, and when we asked for the objectives related to those from the agency, a number of times the agency was not aware of the specific objective that the performance measure was measuring. We also recommend increased transparency by including notes in the budget book for subsequent changes. So if a performance measure changes from year to year or how it's calculated, that that should be included as a note in the budget book. And then as, as we noted as a finding, maintain documentation to support the actual results, and that each agency should document how they set their targets and how they calculate their actuals so that there'll be consistency from year to year. We did note over the past year and a half that a number of calculations have changed, and a lot of it has to do with change in personnel and lack of policies and procedures on how to calculate that. And then the last one is to periodically reevaluate targets and to establish reasonable targets so that if our targets are never being met, those should be reevaluated, and if they're always being met by significant amounts, those should also be reevaluated. And also to align with the first bullet, make sure they're consistent with the, the mission and the goals and objectives of the city and the agency. So that concludes the calendar year 2020 group biennial audits. Would you like to ask questions, or should we continue into the Group A for this coming year?
Let's, let's get to questions first, and then we'll talk about the plan for performance scope for Group A. First, colleagues, I want to note that, and we discussed this last year, I think it's important to highlight that all 16 of these audits are going to be completed by the end of the calendar year, as they were last year. So we've done some good work here in reforming the audit process. I actually want to thank you and your team in the Comptroller's Office. You all have been doing excellent work. Certainly recognize that some of those audits that are completed by December 31st will not be presented to the Board of Estimates until calendar year 2021 at the first available BOE meeting, but do want to commend you for following through on the spirit of the Charter Amendment, which is that all of those audits are completed by the end of the year. So, you know, we're on track there, that's a good thing. I don't have any specific questions on what you just presented. I want to get your general take on how effective you, you think this biennial auditing program has been. Now we have four years of data, both performance and financial for each of the 16 agencies. What's your take on where things are at, Josh?
So my, my take on it is of a couple of different points. So for the performance audits, the city charter requires performance audits of those agencies. And before I got here, that was generally interpreted as performance measure audits. So I would recommend maybe expanding that and auditing performance of certain areas, whether they have a performance metric or not. And what we did, Andy, the Deputy City Auditor, myself, is to increase the value of those audits. When we identified the performance measure, we included in the audit the entire process or objective that was leading up to that measure and included that in the scope of the audit so that we could give feedback on those. And I think that was very helpful. When it comes to the financial audits, there are curtain, a certain number of drawbacks to them. So number one, we don't have balance sheets for each of the agencies, and the reason for that is the city does not maintain balance sheet accounts for each agency. The balance sheet accounts are on a citywide basis for the most part. And that takes away from the value of the audit. Then the agency audits are also on a cash basis or a budget basis or a fund basis accounting, which also decreases the reliability and the accuracy of the information, that it's not on a GAAP basis financial statements. One of the things that we noted is across the board, the payroll findings are consistent. The encumbrance findings are consistent, the grants accounting, grants expenditures, grants revenue, and the revenue are consistent. These are also identified and noted at the CAFR level and the single audit level, and we basically spend a good chunk of time auditing those areas of the financial statements because they're significant to the financial statements. However, we're basically reporting the same findings each time. So that, I believe that with the implementation and the design of the new Workday, that many of those will be addressed there, and I think that is our, the city's best opportunity to address those. However, you know, looking at an individual agency's financial statements, that doesn't really add a lot of value, but we do spend a good chunk of time on that.
Thanks, Josh. I, I want to turn to Director Raymond first because I, I've all having this conversation with you when we negotiated the specifics of this Charter Amendment six years ago, and that was a major concern of yours, it's remained a concern of mine. I just wanted to get your take, if you concur with Josh on the financial audits piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do concur with the city auditor. Let me break my comments into two sections. Based on the type of findings that he identified as related to revenue, encumbrances, grants, payroll, accounts receivable, lack of documentation around payroll events, I believe that the new Workday accounting and payroll system, along with human capital management system, should largely address those types of issues. Now, let me turn my attention specifically to all the financial audits. As the city auditor has indicated, essentially what's occurring is they're regurgitating the findings that are contained from the CAFR and they're regurgitating those findings at the agency level. I have questioned the value of financial audits at the agency level for quite some time. I would like to make the recommendation that we no longer perform the financial audits and use those resources to expand the performance audits. So I agree with the city auditor that financial audits at the agency level are of limited value, are of limited use, and that those, the resources devoted to the financial audits could be put to better use by ending the performance audits. You're on mute.
Director, I'm in complete agreement with you on that. I do want to jump back to the performance audits after we finish this discussion. I'm concerned that there may be legal ramifications to not doing the financial audits at all because of the fact that it's, it's pretty clearly stated in the Charter that auditors are required to do these. I'm wondering if we could meet somewhere halfway in the middle, just for the sake of ensuring compliance with the law, and recommend that we have an even more watered down or pared down financial audit process at the agency level to allow the city auditor to dedicate those resources between the performance audits and then, you know, the gigantic responsibility of, Councilman Henry, I'll get to you in one second, the gigantic responsibility of, of the CAFR, as well as those annual audits of our enterprise utility funds. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the Charter in, open in front of me. What I was trying to remember was, is it hard written into the Charter that there must be a financial audit for each agency each year that it is done?
Yep.
Then, but the, but the commission is given the power to waive them on a case by case basis?
That is correct.
Yeah, and we've historically have just waived it. We'll be taking a vote later this evening to, to BDC audit because they undergo their own independent financial audit each year, so it seems like a waste of resources to audit them twice. Yeah, kind of in a bind, I'd really like to consult with, before we make any hard decisions, I'd really like to consult with the Law Department. I'd also like to consult with incoming Council President Mosby as well as folks from the new mayoral administration, obviously yourself, soon to be comptroller, Henry. So I'm wondering if, if maybe, Josh, since these audits are done, since these performance and financial audits are done separately, what, what would be your reaction to front-loading all the performance audits for Group A in calendar 2021 to give the commission a little bit of time to see some legal guidance and talk to all stakeholders to, to determine a path forward? Marguerite, can you take down the presentation as well, please?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, when it comes to scheduling, we can schedule the performance audits towards the front of the year, and that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a problem. The, the challenge there is we have, our audit staff is, is broken up into financial audit skillset and then performance audit skillset. So we could work around that. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do it 100% though.
Be able to give us until, say, I don't know, late January or early February, maybe, you know, two months or so, to try and get this sorted out. Colleagues on the commission, Isabel Pinkett, what are your thoughts, any concerns here? You're on mute, Isabel. You're on mute.
Am I unmuted? Okay. I've had a hard time today. I would like to actually talk, like you said, I'd like to actually speak to the Law Department and talk to my colleagues on that, too.
Is that me? Oh, I don't think so. Do we have the comptroller on the line? I think she's on the phone. Madam Comptroller?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. What are your thoughts on, on this proposal?
You know what, I had just walked away. What, what was this now?
Oh, no worries. We were, as, as you're aware, Director Raymond and I have had concerns with, you know, conducting these individual financial audits of the specific agencies. We're essentially replicating work that's already done in the CAFR.
True.
Well, I think what we're getting close consensus around and proposing is asking the city auditor to front-load the, the work on the performance audits, which will give the commission some time to consult with the Law Department and incoming Council President Mosby, as well as the administration and the Comptroller's Office, et cetera, to, to try to work towards sorting this out. But in short, we, we can't just not do the financial audits, at least that's our, our, our opinion as, as none of us are lawyers, so we, we
I am.
Oh, you are, I apologize. I, I forgot about that. Fair, fair point. We're, we're tied, our hands are tied behind our back. We only have one lawyer on the commission, so that'll give us some time to consult with the Law Department and figure out how we want to proceed. So that, that's a question for you, Madam Comptroller. Are there any concerns with that approach? Madam Comptroller?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I hit the mute button. I think because we're mandated to do that, we need to continue to do that until we get some guidance from the Law Department that says something different.
Okay. Councilman Pinkett, do you have any feedback on this? Okay, so I, I think what the most, I'm going to take a stab at putting together a motion here, but our, our ask is for the city auditor to hold off on any work on any of the individual agency financial, financial audits until the commission is reconvened in the new year and has had an opportunity to seek guidance from the Law Department and all the stakeholders. Does anyone want to make amendments to that?
I second.
Motion, okay.
I second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? All right. Councilman Pratt?
Councilman, can we, can we say this? Can we work to get that opinion sooner rather than later so that the Audit Department won't fall behind in trying to get them done timely?
Yes, absolutely. There, there's obviously some considerations as to who's going to be on the commission in the next term.
Okay.
But, but yes, we can, we can include language in there that, that we will expedite having those discussions and get an opinion and get a recommendation back to the city auditors as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So can Stella as a yes, Pratt? Pratt?
Yes.
Comment?
I play that again.
I play that again.
If you could, if you could go on mute, Madam Comptroller, I got your yes vote. Coming?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Pinkett? He sent something in the chat that
Yes.
Oh, he's a yes. All right. Okay, great. So if we could jump over to
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? I know, who motion, who made the motion? I know Pratt seconded.
I, I made the motion and Pratt seconded and was six to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If we could go back to the, the performance piece for a second, I think we've concluded the, the financial side of things for Group B calendar year 2020, correct? All right, if we could jump back to the performance piece. Josh, I just want to say that I concur with you 100%. We should not be using performance measures that are in the budget book as audit objectives. We need to think of more meaningful things to look at. The example I commonly use when we audit BSIT, we look at the number of 311 requests that come in. And how many calls are taken? That's their job is to take calls. That's not any type of determination of how effective or efficient they are in delivering services. So I'll just throw that out there and open, open it up to the floor for any other comments on the performance measures. And before I do that, I'll just say, Josh, I do appreciate the fact that you've taken feedback from the commission on that over the, over the past year and a half or so. And it's very clear from this most recent round of audits that you've taken heed to that and have ensured that we're not just looking at the performance measures that are in the budget books, but more meaningful measures that really determine that the efficiency and effectiveness of these agencies. So I'll open it up to the floor if anyone has anything to add.
Yeah, this is Henry Raymond. I would say I concur that performance audits should not be limited to the performance metrics as identified in the budget books. Yep, thank you.
All right. No other comments on the calendar 20 set of audits. I think we're ready to move on to 2021. I'm going to suggest that we hold off on the vote for Baltimore Development Corporation until we get the larger picture on, on financial audits in general. Is there any objection to holding off on that vote until our next meeting? All right, seeing there's none. Josh, let's, let's jump into each of the eight agencies that we've got queued up for 2021. The first one I have here is the fire department. And colleagues, what we're going to do is I'm just going to step through each of the agencies. We'll discuss them one by one. We should be wrapping up shortly after that. Is everyone good with that approach? Okay. Let's start with the fire department. In reviewing the Group A audit for fire from calendar 2019, I have some pretty significant concerns about our department in general. Whoever's not on mute, if you could please whoever's not on mute, if you could please go on mute. Thank you. I've got some pretty significant concerns about the fire department. One of the findings dealt with not having a comprehensive electronic tracking system. There seems to be, as I would characterize it, some data integrity issues with what's going on at fire. So Josh, I would just ask that you pay special attention to that in this coming year. And, you know, do your best to come up with meaningful performance objectives that, you know, keep in mind those limitations within the fire department. Colleagues, anything to add on fire? Josh, do you want to share any?
Wait, I had something.
Oh, go ahead, Isabel.
There's a program called the Fire Watch. And if they could look at the auditing of that. It's come up a couple of times and I am interested in that.
Yeah, the Fire Watch program is a program when larger commercial buildings don't have certain components of their fire safety systems. For example, they may not have a pump or their alarm system is malfunctioning. And that requires that they pay the fire department to have someone physically monitor the building 24/7, which can be quite costly. So Josh, I'm not sure how you'd want to frame that objective around Fire Watch. Obviously, something more meaningful than just, you know, how many dollars in revenue are we bringing in on Fire Watch? But if you could and if you have any initial thoughts, we'd like to hear them.
So regarding Fire Watch, I have to familiarize myself with how that works. And then what we would do, if that was one of the objectives of the audit, would basically get an understanding of how that whole thing works, what the objectives of the fire department is related to that, and then how that whole process works from, you know, initiation to an event happening to collecting revenue, and then basically give an assessment on that.
Yeah, I'm thinking something like determine the extent to which fire department has appropriate policies and procedures in place to manage and execute the Fire Watch program, something along those lines. Isabel, does that touch on? All right, that's a yep.
That would be good.
You're on mute, but I saw a yes. Okay, anything, anything else for fire? Department of General Services, comments? Councilman Henry?
Can we look at the building utilization rate?
Sure.
I'm, I'm raising the issue because I've had some conversations lately with agencies about asset management and trying to get a, it's been a little difficult trying to get a sense of how, how many of our buildings are used at what capacity? And so I, I, I think that would be a good place to start with DGS to see if we can get from them a utilization rate.
Would that be utilization for both ones that are occupied by city agencies? Or would that also be ones that we are renting out?
I, I would think it would count. I mean, if we're, if we have our, if our, if our buildings are full, but the reason they're full is because we're renting a number of them out to non-city agencies, then maybe we need to sell those buildings, you know, maybe we just don't need more space. But what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing agencies saying they need more space and they're fighting with each other over limited space in some buildings, which makes me wonder, well, maybe they should be over here in another city-owned building that we're currently renting out to somebody else.
So, Councilman, is there a way we could make that a little bit more qualitative?
Yeah, yeah, that's a
Because what you're asking sounds just like a simple data request from DGS. So maybe it's, you know, determine the extent to which DGS is Well, I'm tripping up on this one a little.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, let me, let me, let me think more about it and see if we can figure out a way to frame it better.
Okay. All right. Anything else on DGS? Let's jump over to Department of Public Works. Josh, something around water billing? Water billing system is broken.
Mr. Chair?
Can I speak on that?
Yep, Councilman Henry, then Inspector General coming.
Thank you. I was, that one, I was wondering if we could look at billing disputes filed versus billing disputes resolved and time taken to reach resolution with goals of improving performance and resolving the disputed ones faster. Like, that would, that'd be a place to start, but there's also just the question, and, Mr. Chair, I wish I could act, I could think of a more tactful way to frame this. How do we check to see if we're actually sending bills to everybody who should be getting bills? Because I keep having people bringing up these cases of property owners who claim that they've never received a bill from the city or they haven't received one for several years and they have reached out to, to complain about it and still haven't gotten one. How do we understand how DPW's billing is set up such that it can't accept a request for a bill?
Inspector General?
This is an area that I would, would, has been, it's currently being examined by many people. And I think this is probably an area that would be a really wise thing that if the audit team might work with my office because otherwise I doubt my mind will be duplicating efforts. And this is, this is a big issue. So I, I think this is a very important audit, but I think it's an audit that we really need to have completely side task with the auditors.
Do we have any concerns with utilizing auditor resources to look at what happened in the previous two fiscal years, considering how much the landscape around water building has changed?
It, it has changed a lot, but there's also been much more than, there's going to be some reports coming out very soon that I think will, will make everything bring it together a lot.
So maybe we want to focus more on the on that qualitative piece that Councilman Henry brought up around, you know, how these disputes are being handled and whether or not they're getting resolved?
I actually know a lot about that now.
Okay.
But it's, it'll come out soon. I just, I just don't want us to duplicate efforts and do, you know,
Sure.
Trying to be as, can't talk about a lot.
All right, anything else for DPW? Anything around solid waste staffing? Solid waste recruitment?
I, I guess this would fall under the category of, well, I, I, again, like you've, Mr. Chair, you've, you've caused me to, to be on, to be careful that I'm not simply making a data request from DPW into an audit request. So I, I'm, I'm not sure if my concerns about DPW, solid waste staffing and collection really are things to be audited until we get the information from them to begin with. Like, one of the questions, I, I have a question of has trash tonnage increased since we stopped doing home collection of recycling such that it's clear that people are just throwing their recyclables in the trash because that's what we're picking up? But I don't know if that's audit worthy. So I, I'm going to hold off then and wait and see if I can just get these as data requests from DPW. And if there's a difficulty with that, I may come back to the commission and ask for that to be part of the upcoming performance audit.
Okay. Anything else on DPW? DHCD? Finance? Councilman Henry?
I was, again, in this falling into the category of not simply tracking performance metrics, but maybe if this isn't one that's already being used, it would be interesting to see if the OA could pick this up. I'm curious about the time it takes the city to provide funds when we are a pass-through for state and federal funds going to local nonprofits. That's something that I, that complains about all the time. So could we, could we look into what, you know, where are the slowdowns in that process? How much of those slowdowns are happening inside finance? And how much of the slowdown is happening with finance's inability to get proper information from an agency?
Like, determine the extent to which finance has policies and procedures in place to manage the discipline of federal and state pass-through grants and how effective finance is at managing that process?
Sure.
One thing I noted in the, in the performance audit from the last round for finance, one of the objectives dealt with Service 148 Real Property Collection Tax Rate, or Real Property Tax Collection Rate, the rate of collection for real property taxes. There we go. Finally got it right. Josh, I noticed, and I know this is prior to your time with the city, but I noticed that was an objective, but there was nothing listed in the performance report associated with that objective. Moving forward, can I'd like to see, you know, for each of the objectives, some type of finding, even if it's a finding of no finding. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, typically, we put that in the executive summary now, whether whether there was no findings in a specific thing or will identify the three things that were within the scope and then the two that had findings, making it clear that there was no findings on it.
Yeah, I think, and that kind of leads to an overarching point I had about the performance audits and the objective scope and methodology section. When you're in OS and M, there, there's not a whole lot in terms of the methodology for what you're looking at. Where did you get the data from? What data were you looking at? What, what, how did you analyze that data to come to the conclusion? And again, this is, I've seen it get incrementally, but slowly better. But I think if we could focus a little bit on, you know, beefing up that OS and M, because you're, you know, you've got auditors that work for eight, 10 months at a time. I know that they're doing more than what's described in the OS and M.
Okay, um. I will, um, I'll put something together and um, I will get your feedback on it to make sure on the same page.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, anything else for Finance? All right, uh, Baltimore Development Corporation. Oh, Director Raymond, you're on mute though, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I'll throw one out. How about uh, citywide well, paying bills and within thirty days?
Invoices?
Yeah, the issue of uh, paying, paying vendor bills within thirty days. It's been something that everybody's talked about for a number of years. We're still not paying bills within thirty days. So maybe this should be the subject of a, a performance audit. Because hopefully what can come out of it is recommendations so that bills can be paid within thirty days so that we improve our relationship with the vendor community.
Totally concur.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for Finance? All right, Baltimore Development Corporation? Okay, uh, Baltimore City Information Technology.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that this technically might, may or may not be the, the BDC alone, but um, do we already have something in place for auditing the CARES Act funds?
We, we don't. Uh, that being said, this, the dispersment of CARES Acts fund wouldn't be in the scope of this because it ends, the, the timeframe is from July one of uh, eighteen until June thirty of. So that, that would be probably a se- a separate exercise, and I don't know if that, that oversight would be most appropriate from the council or. I know, uh, Director Raymond had Ernst and Young on board. They are the city's consultant on that, so. But I'd be happy to discuss offline, you know, what, what oversight mechanisms we could exercise um, on that. Um, okay, uh, Baltimore City Information Technology, um. I, I would really like to see something around information security. Uh, we've made some really significant investments uh, over the last year and a half after ransomware. Um, Josh, do you, do you have any information systems auditor? You, you do, right?
Um, currently, we do not.
You do not? Okay, um. So how do we do this if we don't have any de-security auditors? I used to, I'm not looking for a change in profession at the moment, so I can't help.
Um, so we um, we can bring in outside resources, uh, like a contractor resource. And there are, um, we do have the ability to do, let's say, like, um, IT auditing outside the box around it. So um, combining those two factors, we could, we could put the other scope for you.
Okay. Um, do we need a vote on that? Is, is the commission comfortable making a revelation that uh, the auditor bring in uh, consultant or contractor to assist with the uh, BSIT audit to focus on uh, IT.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Henry, uh, second by Raymond. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Marguerite, that, that one passes, six to zero. Uh, anything else for BSIT? Josh, if you can fit something in around the IT strategic planning process. Our uh, our city CIO, Todd Carter, has done just an excellent job over the last, I don't know, sixteen months or however long he's been here. Unfortunately, his predecessor completely ignored the IT strategic planning process for a good two years. Uh, so Todd has, has had to immerse himself in that along with information security and all this new funding and ramping up his, his capacity, et cetera. So if, if you could think through um, some language around something related to IT strategy. I know he's doing the work, I just would like to, you know, dive into that a little bit.
We could put the other scope for you.
Okay, great. Uh, anything else on BSIT? Okay, last one is Mayor's Office of Human Services. Uh, so if you all recall, the language in the charter says that uh, either the agency or whatever the successor agency is to that. Um, I guess this question is for Matt and Nina before we start diving into this one. Um, that office's original functionality is split up between the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is uh, Matt Segman from the Mayor's Office. That is accurate.
Okay, are there any other agencies that are performing former functionality of MOHS?
Not to my knowledge. I, I could not tell you with absolute specificity, as I've only worked in city government for a little over a year myself. But to my knowledge, uh, those two agencies cover everything that MOHS previously did.
All right, so I think the first thing we should probably do is entertain a motion to declare that the scope of MOHS will now be Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, of Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. I can only assume without talking to the Law Department that that is open to our interpretation, so I'll take that liberty and we can get a, opinion from law at a later date. Uh, but that seems to me to be reasonable. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
This is John Pratt, this is second, second.
Okay, motion by Raymond, second by Pratt. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, um, anything for, specific to MOHS?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, again, based on the complaints that my office gets from uh, the homeless community and their advocates, uh, I'm trying to think of a way to word the auditing of shelter conditions and utilization rates. And I, I'd be um, open to wording suggestion from the rest of the commission in how we frame, frame or phrase that.
Determine the extent to which MOHS is adequately managing and coordinating our inventory of homeless shelters to meet the city's goals and its strategic plan to end homelessness.
That was beautiful, Mr. Chair, thank you.
My pleasure. Anyone else on MOHS? Okay, uh, Josh, can you get uh, the commission one or two pager with um, the proposed performance objectives by say, mid to, uh, say a month from now?
Yes.
For our review, okay. Um, and then we are going to coordinate with uh, the Law Department Council President, et cetera, on uh, this financial audit piece. Uh, if there are any other takeaways that I may have missed? We, we have the ability to approve meeting minutes electronically, right? We don't have to have a meeting for that? Is there any concerns with approving meeting minutes electronically? Marguerite, would you be able to get us a draft of the meeting minutes by the end of November?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So we'll, we'll circulate those uh, electronically. Uh, colleagues, any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second, meeting is adjourned. Um, thank you all. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Josh, thanks for all the great work.
You as well. Stay safe.